And with that addition, I move we adopt the amended agenda.
Second?
I have a motion as second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alies.
There were no signups, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we'll move item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as published and for the mayor to sign or to attest.
A motion as second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you come roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Alies was carried. Item eight, there were no items moved from six, so we'll move to eight. And under community presentations tonight, we'll hear about the Lime Bike Bike Share program. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and all the members of the community. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. It was great to be able to demo the products before this, and I hope that this presentation will give you a little bit better sense of what Lime Bike is, what we want to do, and answer some of the questions you might have.
Thank you, and if you'll state your name.
Yep, my name is Megan Colford.
Megan, thank you.
Yeah, and I grew up in Boise, so it's really exciting to be able to come back to the Treasure Valley for this. So, to get started, why are we building Lime Bike? What is Lime Bike? We are a dockless mobility provider. Our goal is to revolutionize urban mobility, leading the country in first and last mile transportation options. So we want it to be fun, affordable, offer a healthy way to get around. The way we started is, you may be familiar with really the heavy docked systems like the one in this photo. They're great. They really have laid a lot of groundwork for bike share in the country and internationally, and getting bike share to be part of public discourse. There are some limitations. Number one is that they're expensive, and these systems often charge cities or communities to install their racks and operate there. They can be inconvenient and really limit where and how people can get places, and often inequitable and not really serving the entire region. So what we have done is to create what we call a dockless model or dock-free model. So all of our products are GPS-enabled. We don't install any infrastructure, which limits the amount of cost. We ask for nothing from cities and communities. We can serve a much wider range in the community, and we can be much more flexible, offering a more flexible solution for folks. We are in over 50 locations around the country, including 15-plus college campuses. You can see on this map some of the key places that we are, and I think this is probably already outdated. We moved very quickly, so we've probably launched quite a few since then. Just a few things to highlight. In Seattle, with our first 500 bikes, we actually exceeded the old program's best week ever in one single day. South Bend is one of our other really awesome locations, where we, in our first week, just saw really great ridership numbers. You'll also notice on this map that the types of communities that we operate in really have a broad range. We've got big cities, we've got suburban communities, we've got Miami area and South Lake Tahoe, which are sort of resort-y type locations, and we've got college campuses. So what we've been able to do since we launched our first market in June is adapt our program based on the needs of the particular community, on how big it is, how dense it is, its location and the surrounding area, and really have a diverse, you know, 50 locations. So what sets Lime Bike apart? The main thing is really that we operate free of charge to the city. We come, we want to provide our products and our service to the community as a benefit and as a partnership, but with no money taken from the city. Our pricing is meant to be really affordable for the users. We're a very well-funded company, and we have really proved ourselves since our inception, January of 2017, with the success in those markets that I showed you. And we really consider ourselves the nation's leader in a lot of ways. So how does it work? All of the unlocking, locating, and payment happens through the app. If you download the app, it's a free app. You sign up, you do all of the onboarding just right there on your phone. When you want to ride a bike, you can open it, and it will show you on the picture. You can see the nearest location. It will also specify whether the bike that you're walking to is a regular bike, an electric bike, or a scooter. Once you're there, you unlock it using your phone, you ride it to wherever you want to go, lock it back up, and you're on your way. You'll get a recap of your ride on your phone that you can share to social media. You can see how much carbon you've saved, how many calories you burned, all that sort of fun things. A little bit about our bike. This is a regular pedal bike, which I didn't have for demo today. But all of our products, we design and manufacture ourselves. We have taken really great care to make it something that can serve a wide range of sizes and shapes and abilities. An example of how quickly we move and how much we want this to work, our first iteration of bikes, the seats didn't go up very high. I'm a tall woman, and they weren't tall enough for me, and we got a lot of feedback. And within like a month, we were able to iterate on that and create a newer version that has a higher seat post. We also have complete safety certifications on our bikes. We have front lights and rear lights and reflective tires. And the bikes and the scooters are meant to be maintenance-free. They're really also meant to be really easy to ride, again, playing into that accessibility for folks. This is our Lime E, which we had outside. It's an electric assist bike. You can see some of the specs down there. The max speed is about 14.8 miles per hour, well within the range of still being considered a bike, and really quite fun, I think. Our operations team swaps out the battery about every four to five days on this one. Our Lime S, that is our scooter, our electric scooter. Again, the specs are there for you to see. This is our newest product and already our most successful and most popular. You can see why. It's quite fun. It's quite easy to get around, and we like it. That's all I can say on that one. So what does the pricing look like? For the regular pedal bike, it is $1 for every 30 minutes. No membership fee, no upfront fee, just $1 per 30 minutes. We do have a membership option for our power users, and that's $30 for 100 rides, and that's monthly. And then students and campus are 50% off, as well as our low-income equity program. Our electric products, we're on the slides. Those are $1 to unlock and 15 cents per minute. I think the slide actually says 10 cents, but we're still figuring out exactly what that price point is, but knowing that it's charged by the minute for that instead of by the half hour. The biggest question, one of the biggest questions we get is, okay, you're dockless, you don't install anything, you don't have to lock to anything. How do you control the parking? How do you make sure that it's a clean operation? What we do is we hire a local staff in every city that we operate in, and their job is to go around moving bikes if needed, maintaining them if needed, and responding to customer service, questions, complaints, or concerns. We try to do a lot of education upfront anytime that we launch. The first couple weeks are usually when we hear the most feedback, as people get used to this new, different thing. And then after that, our continued operations, our continued outreach and education, we find that it really settles down and becomes a really wonderful part and resource for the community. We cover all this maintenance that's included. We're not charging the city for that as well. For our Lime S, we also have what we call our juicer program, and that is an outsourced, kind of crowdsourced, charging model, which is another way for local folks to get involved and be part of it. We also have quite a few creative things that we've done in terms of parking. Again, education is the biggest way that we're going to make it a success. So we educate in the app, and we are also the only dockless provider that has proactively, we've put together some really fun videos online around safety and parking education and that sort of thing. We do have the option, you can see in the slide, to geofence a no-parking zone, and we can also identify key yes-parking zones. Down the road, we're looking at, we're experimenting right now with some gamification model for good parking behavior, for some like crowdsourcing, helping with the good parking. I think we'll see as we come up with creative ideas what works the best. But as I mentioned, once we've been in a market for quite some time, the parking issues tend to die down, and people end up, we have really high compliance rate. So from a city perspective, one of the really cool things about our program, I mentioned that all of our products are GPS-enabled. So we have data about where people are picking up and dropping off bikes and scooters, and where they're riding them, what time of day, how long, all that sort of thing. We share that data with our partners, anonymized, of course, but we can show you exactly in Meridian, what are the streets that people are riding down that it might make sense to create a bike lane? What are the streets where people make turns that is maybe a little bit dangerous, or that, you know, the drivers don't know what's happening? And what time of day do we need to be most catering to the biking community? As you're growing rapidly and as you're making these kinds of transportation decisions, I think that this data sharing might be one of the most compelling things about this program. I want to highlight one of the really cool things that happened in Seattle when we first launched. Again, I mentioned that we're very flexible, so we might have an idea going in of where people are going to use the product, and if that changes, we're able to adapt. When we first launched in Seattle, we deployed our bikes close to the downtown area, anticipating that that would be where we see most ridership, and it is. But we very quickly saw that the bikes were drifting down into the Columbia City area. If you're familiar with Seattle, that's a very demographically diverse, lower-income area that previously wasn't served with the docked bike system. With our model, we acknowledged that. We said, hey, this is a need that we're filling. Let's make sure we're deploying and continuing to serve that community. And so now about 30 to 40% of our bikes are deployed in Columbia City area. Oh, 20 to 30, I'm sorry. So a community partnership, my role now with the company is community affairs. And what that means is that we identify who are the local organizations that we want to partner with, the local press, the schools, the associations, all of you. In order to make this a success, there has to be the right buy-in and education to the community. So were we to move forward, we would work very closely to communicate, hold events, demos like we did today, everything that will really ramp up to make this a success, and continue that long after the launch, so that we're really empowering the local community to take ownership and make this part of their day-to-day life. A little bit about our company. We're based in San Mateo in Silicon Valley. We're backed by several tier-one venture capital firms. To date, we've raised over $100 million, and we're members of associations, and we routinely interact with city officials, government officials around the country. We have a really well-experienced team in that. And, you know, we are here for the long haul. We're really excited and looking forward to hopefully partnering. So in the Treasure Valley, we initially were targeting an April 2018 launch. I think that we're probably looking a little bit further in the spring, but our goal is to have a regional program with all three of our products, regional meaning all of the surrounding cities, that we can bring here, that we can collaborate, put together a program that really serves your needs, and that is really going to be, you know, impactful and long-term sustaining. This is my contact information here, and my colleague Gabriel, who I work closely with. I'm happy to answer any questions, and thanks again for allowing me to be here.
Thank you, Megan. Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor. Megan, you're my hero right now.
Wow.
So we were out there, and I was just trying to just enjoy the technology in the moment while trying to put off the dread of what you were going to ask us for, thinking it was going to be money. Because why on earth wouldn't you? Everybody that comes over here wants some money, especially things like this. The second slide where it was all bold and said at no cost to the city, like, I had to like blink, like, is that, is that real? So I'm pumped. How can we help you?
Yeah, so I think, you know, what I would ask of you is your support in moving forward with staff, if that, in whatever capacity that you think makes sense. We can operate with as simple as a business license, if that makes sense to you, or we can put together a formal agreement. I know that Caleb and his colleagues have been looking at an agreement that we've used in other locations. So, you know, however I can answer questions to make you feel comfortable with that, I'm happy to do so.
Madam Mayor. Mr. Burnt.
Thank you. Have you spoke with any other municipality here in the Treasure Valley? Are we the first?
Yes. I am in contact with the cities of Eagle and Boise and Garden City and Nampa and Boise State and ACHD.
Nice. By the way, I should have started out by saying thank you for the demo. I had a great time.
Good.
It was a lot of fun. You have some nice stuff. I guess my, the first thing that came to my mind is, when would I use the bikes or the scooters? The first thing that came to my mind is maybe like more like an urban situation, or maybe if I was on vacation, you know, somewhere cool, I'd want to, you know, maybe the family. Have you had a, tell me about your success with like more of a suburban area like Meridian?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the areas that we operate in is the Bay Area. We are in seven, nine cities in the Bay Area. Some are San Francisco and Oakland, and then we have quite a few more suburban areas like Walnut Creek and Alameda. I think one of the things that's great about it is it does fill the, as you're growing, I think that having this resource is going to be a really exciting thing and interesting thing to see how it fits in with the growth of the city. We have had a lot of success with suburban areas that are connected to a larger regional program, which is why we're talking to Boise and Eagle and neighboring places, so that we can, as a whole, make it, you know, efficient for us on our operations end and also be able to serve Meridian as well as downtown Boise. Does that help?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Megan, appreciate your diligence on this project. You mentioned in your presentation about it's your goal to have a dedicated person in each city, and I didn't want to make an assumption, so I guess I'm curious. Where you're talking to so many municipalities in the Treasure Valley, is it your business model to have a dedicated person in Meridian and a dedicated person for Eagle and Garden City and Boise, et cetera? Or are you looking more to have a small handful of staff manage the region?
Yeah, thanks for that question, and I'll clarify. We have, our model is that we will have one specific operations lead or operations manager likely for the region. They'll have a staff, I mean, if we were in the whole Treasure Valley, their staff would probably be, you know, 10 or more, that would be, you know, working all different areas depending on the time of day and the needs. So it would be one-point person that all of the cities could go to if needed, and then a full staff hired from each local city and really one, you know, regional team.
Madam Mayor. And I don't know if this, again, appreciate Megan's here, but I know that I've got some questions for staff. I don't know if it's okay for us to go and talk to them now, or if they're comfortable with that. I want to make sure we got time for Megan. So either a question for Mr. Neri or Caleb. In the Transportation Commission, a couple of questions came up about the way our city code looks at abandoned vehicles or vehicles that have sat in one spot for a predetermined amount of time. Have we had a chance to look at how our city code would pertain to, if a bike like this was left on the corner of Main and Broadway for an indeterminate amount of time, how we would respond?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we haven't fully researched all of those issues on use and where they could be used, and if there's conflict with our code and pathways and other places and abandoned vehicles and things like that. So I think that would be part of our task in entering into an agreement, is making sure if we need to line up any codes or adjust codes or things like that, that it would be in conjunction with this agreement.
Yella?
So Madam Mayor, yes, no, I have not looked into the codes for abandoned, if this would qualify as a vehicle or not. Like Mr. Neri just said, we can look into that. The other thing that was an outstanding question, so maybe I'll beat you to your point or your question, was electric vehicles on our pathway system. So I meant to follow back up with Kimberly before the meeting, and I just walked over before this, or during this presentation. We don't have an answer to that one yet either, but we, you know, would take that before to you and say, hey, do we want to amend our code to allow electric assist bikes, scooters on our pathway networks? They're also working with ACHDs, my understanding, I think you mentioned that in your presentation. And as the city doesn't control the right-of-way, a lot of the riding would occur in ACHD, on ACHD streets and sidewalks. I do, Madam Mayor, if I can maybe just interject a little bit and provide a little bit of insight into that, mention the meeting that you mentioned by the Transportation Commission, and just give you a brief summary of that presentation, that discussion. So Megan was here on the 5th of March and presented to the Transportation Commission. They were supportive as well. She mentioned, too, there is a draft service agreement. I think I put it in the packet for tonight. So they had some comments on some of that. One concern they had was, and you don't see it in this revised MOU, was there was an exclusivity clause, so that's been removed. This current in draft form, the MOU states a three-year term. They were more comfortable with a one- or two-year pilot program. They were, they had some questions. They weren't overly concerned, but just with some of the indemnification and insurance language in there, and I think Legals has looked at and will continue to look at that, just to make sure they're comfortable with that. And then the ordinances, again, motorized vehicles and things like that. So that was a very, very quick summary. They were very supportive of this in general, but had some of those kind of concerns that I just outlined there. I can, if I can, Madam Mayor, just a little bit more on, since that meeting then, some other feedback I've had, a Transportation Commissioner, you know, you guys are in the news, so some of these stories get sent to me in other communities. Some concern has been some clutter that these can with a couple hundred bikes. I don't know that that's a problem in a, you know, suburban type of a community. I really don't know that that's going to be a big issue. And with the model that Lime Bike is proposing with reallocating them to different places where they will get used, I don't think, they want to leave it on a street corner too long either. They want it to be in use, and so they could even probably solve that problem for the most part. Now, if they weren't performing, what would we do? That question still remains. But, and then the licensing thing, just kind of figuring out what that looks like. Is it an MOU? Is there some other form that this should take? A little bit of concern with, you know, it's a startup, longevity of the company, and, you know, the bikes themselves, the scooters themselves, how quality are they? But generally, I think, you know, everyone's, you know, pretty supportive. As was mentioned, there's not a lot of skin in the game from the city's perspective. It seems like a lot of pros. But those were some of the concerns that came up through the Transportation Commission, and then some commissioners following up after that meeting, so. With that, Madam Mayor, just wanted to give you that quick summary.
Thank you, Caleb.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
One question. How many bikes would you propose? I mean, knowing our geographics and who we are, and since you're from the Treasure Valley, how many bikes or, you know, scooters, I guess, would you think that we would have in our community roughly-ish?
Ish? I would, I would start with the number about like 200, and maybe 50% of those E products and 100, the other 50%, so 100 of those regular bikes.
But that's including the entire Treasure Valley, though?
No, I would, I would say just that for Meridian, actually. Yeah. Yeah, it seems like a lot. If you look at like a map, what we can do is we can identify, here's where we're going to initially deploy things, and it actually adds up quite quickly. And the beauty is, if that ends up being too many, then we'll take them off, because to Caleb's point, we don't want a bike out there that's not being ridden. If it's too little, we can add more as needed. If people ride electric more than regular, we can adjust the ratio. But typically, we see, like, in the 1 to 200 range is a good starting point for some, for a city this size.
Madam Mayor, if I could just throw one more item, just as food for thought as we work through this, is in the Idaho code and the city code, county code, I mean, various city codes around, there's pretty good definition on what bikes are and what motorcycles are. They're not greatly defined for other types of vehicles such as the e-bike. And so that's something where, as you are all well aware, I mean, the code tends to sort of catch up to the reality of what's occurring out in the world. So educating people on how to use them or where they can use them has got to be part of the dialogue here, whether that's something the city would partner in or how they would do that. But that's certainly an issue that's going to be a concern on how people can use it, where they can, understanding that. There's a, there's a great deal lack of knowledge of a lot of people on how to use bicycles and where they can ride bicycles. So riding bikes with motors on them will probably be another challenge. So just another piece to think of. It's not something that would prohibit us from doing it. It's just that that's a component that will probably end up not just at Lime Bike's website, but at the city's. And so helping educate our public on using these items would probably be part of getting through this programs.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Megan, is there something that you could then put in your app? Or maybe you already have it, but I guess it would be more specific to our area, that when they first download the app, would be like a list of instructions or, you know, some kind of a PDF that they could click on for the rules and laws?
Yeah, so in our user agreement, users agree to abide by whatever the local laws are where they're operating. And there is an onboarding flow with kind of basic safety tips. We could certainly make it local to Treasure Valley of here's Idaho law, you know, so when they open the app for the first time in Idaho, it says some particular message. That's certainly something we could do. Thank you.
Do you pre-arrange with some local businesses that you can have the bike share, bikes out in front of their businesses and maybe even information on, imprint on that? Not everyone is technology savvy, but that you go into partnership with local businesses?
Yeah, absolutely. We have what are called Lime Hubs, which are designated locations specifically actually for scooters. And so we can ask local businesses if they'd like to be part of that and be designated on the app. Otherwise, if we find bikes are continually at a particular location, we would, you know, reach out to whoever is impacted by that, make sure they're aware. You know, before launch, we'd get in touch with like places like The Village and make sure that everyone is aware there. We wouldn't want to deploy bikes there without business owners, business operators knowing. And we also have a Lime travel program for hotels. If hotels are interested in having this as a benefit for their employees or guests, we do have a full program for that. So we have a wide variety of ways to engage with businesses.
That's great. And so have you worked with staff on, maybe I saw your map, and identifying some of the similar metro areas that we might be able to contact and find out how the program worked in theirs, how the education went with their citizens and those kind of things? Would you provide contact information?
Yeah, happy to. We have plenty of references we can send.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Caleb, in your kind of explanation of the MOU idea, you had mentioned one year. Were you talking about a one-year MOU or a one-year exclusivity in it?
Let me see, Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer. So that is section 12 of the MOU. I don't know if you have it handy or not. But just, that's what the term is in the draft MOU, is their base template, I think, is three years. And the Transportation Commission, again, they were relatively supportive. They just thought maybe two years instead of three. It's maybe not as big. But if you look at some of the other clauses in there about canceling, you know, let's see if I can find that real quick. It's like 60 days, yeah, it's the next one, so 13, termination. Within 60 days' notice, we could terminate for some, you know, if it goes south for some reason. So I don't know that I have an issue necessarily with three years. That's just what the Transportation Commission recommended to you all.
Madam Mayor, yeah, and it wasn't the length of the MOU that I was worried about. It was the exclusivity that weird, that wouldn't be included, no exclusivity.
Megan and her team have already updated this, so you don't even see that. So they heard that from the Transportation Commission, have already updated this draft agreement to reflect the Transportation Commission's recommendation. Sorry.
Cool, thanks.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question then a comment. Megan, I didn't hear you touch on, and I can't remember, this came up in the Transportation Commission, or this is something that popped in my head. How you handle helmets? I think that, you know, we're obviously a community that wants to be bike-friendly and support bike safety.
Yeah.
Wearing a helmet is part of that. So talk to me about how your organization helps promote that safety where people maybe aren't always packing a helmet with them.
Yeah, so, great question. We get that question also a lot. For a variety of reasons, it doesn't make operational sense to attach helmets to bikes. We've looked into what other companies have tried to do and have failed at. It really is, it really is challenging to have a helmet with the bike. What we do, we don't ever want a lack of access to helmet to prevent someone from riding a bike. So what we've done is we've partnered with local schools, local organizations to give out free helmets to those who need it. One of the cities in the Bay Area has helmets for checkout at the library. And another team has had helmets in the, in their van. And another team has had helmets in the, in their van, so that if they see someone under the age of 18 without a helmet, they'll pull over and give them a helmet. So the, what we have done is, is we want to do outreach and education and, and give free helmets in an effort to try to encourage that.
Madam Mayor, a comment. And Megan's response, I think, just kind of speaks to this company. And Megan and I met, I think, in November or December, and I threw rapid fire a lot of concerns that I had. And to her credit and to Limebike's credit, they've responded to, to every one of them. And Caleb speaks about the Transportation Commission's concern about exclusivity, and they've responded in kind. And so I'm, for one, supportive of continuing down the, the MOU process to bring something back to council for us to have the opportunity to look at, support or, or not support. I think it would also be helpful to get some better understanding as to where the other neighboring municipalities are planning to go. Support from the Highway District is obviously, I think, key, because it's their, their roadway. The other piece that I would be interested to know about, we talked about this with the Transportation Commission, is the feedback from our school districts. They're obviously a very large partner with our community and making sure that this isn't something that they feel they now have to figure out how to adjust and, and support. To me, would be really beneficial to know before I'd want to make a decision.
Absolutely.
And I, I guess, Megan, who are your typical users? I would imagine that they're not school-age kids. It's, it's more around the universities that we have. Idaho State University and the Idaho College of Osteopathic Medicine that's coming to town. High schools, do you do it at high schools too? Who are your typical target riders?
Yeah, we, we do actually see quite a lot of riders in the high school age. Our age requirements are, if you're between 13 and 18, you ride, acknowledging that you have parental consent. 18 and over, it's fine to ride. But we do actually see, especially in suburban areas, we see quite a lot of high school age riders. We see a lot of rides, you ride at like campus-type things, so I could see at hospitals or, not the patients, the doctors, but, and universities and colleges, anywhere that has kind of that campus-type feel, we see quite a bit of ridership. We also see a lot of recreational riding on the weekends, families who their kids have bikes, but the parents don't. It really ends up being a wide variety. And of course, the commuters, first and last mile, but, so we can say that we're targeting something, but really it, and especially with the three different products, we see a wide range of people who use the service.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Just one question. This is the perfect example of how a program like this can be implemented and successful with private business as opposed to government. You have profit motive and, and a desire to make all of the right decisions to make this thing successful. Where the bikes are located, how you partner with municipalities and school districts and private businesses, it's in your best interest and your sustainability depends upon it. And it sounds like you've certainly got the research and data to make sure it can be financially viable for you here in the community. The only, and, and you've got the stuff I like in MOUs with insurance coverage for the city, you've got 60-day outs with termination, you've got a lot of great protections for the city, which I appreciate. The only question, not for today, but as this evolves down the road, is define, define the clause "use of city property" and what use means and what city property means? It's not defined in there and things like pathways and what does it mean to use? And what does it not mean? I guess that specific would be important for us to understand in the next stage of this.
Yeah, and you do bring up, it is an interesting place because it is operated by ACHD. So I think that that clause specifically is something that we should look into and figure out if there's more language needed.
Sure. Well, and Madam Mayor, just a definition is all I'm saying. You know, for example, city property can be a park, but you don't want to park it in the middle of Settlers Park in a soccer field, for example. And there'll be some nerdy lawyer definitions that help everyone comply and make it even more valuable. So that's the only question for the next stage of this MOU. Awesome stuff.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Well, Megan, I really appreciate the little test that we got, test drive we got today. I, I think this is a fantastic program, so I'm really excited for you. What a great company, and, and I'm really, I'm thankful that you're bringing this to our community. People need to be out riding bikes more often, so this is great for health, it fits in our strategic plan, in my opinion. And, I was like, I was going somewhere with that. Oh, so Mike, I don't have a question for you, that was my comment, but she's hoping to get this started in April. So I don't know how much more time we need and how many more meetings we have to have in fixing words and stuff, but they really, they're ready to get this started and they want to get it going for spring, and it's already the end of March. So I'm in full support of going forward with the MOU, fixing a few areas that need to be adjusted, but we can't just drag our feet on this either.
What is your timeline with the other communities?
Um, the timeline is, we're on track to, it's a little bit sort of like this, that, that we're just meeting with the right people and, and it could, you know, you never know if someone has some serious concern that it could add on several weeks or a month. But it's looking like if everything goes smoothly, we could still be on track for the spring launch. With that being said, we are totally open. We want to make sure that it's the right fit. We want to make sure that it is really going to be successful when we do launch. So if there is anything, any concerns from any of the, the communities, we'd be okay to delay that if needed, to make sure that it, you know, all comes together in a nice way.
I, I think there's a couple of questions that have been raised by council that would, what is a reasonable timeframe, Mr. Neri, to, to get a draft agreement back and maybe even have a little further information explored in terms of what other communities have learned in necessary public outreach in, in both the helmet aspect, where to park, where not to park, how, where you're allowed to ride, and et cetera.
Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so we did start doing some research, and one of the conflicts, and I think we can work this out with Limebike, but the rules in each municipality, the county and the state, are all different. And so the problem in the education piece is you can ride it in one location in the city of Boise that you can't ride in the city of Meridian. And ITD prohibits some of these from being on, or ACHD prohibits some of these from being on sidewalks. So that's, that's a conflict I can't fix quickly. But that's an education piece that we have to figure out with Limebike, I think. We have a base to start with, so I think that's good. I think the definitional things, I think, are important. I don't foresee that being problematic, it's just making sure we've identified to Limebike, because again, this is a fairly unique jurisdiction where you have the roadways under one authority and then a lot of the other locations where these could be used under a different authority. So I, I couldn't give you specifics on timing, but I think we've got a good start, and I think we've done some of the research already to at least identify the, the issues that they probably need to be aware of. Whether or not you can operate it in Meridian the same place as Boise is probably more of a Limebike education piece than Meridian. But we wanted, I thought we need to be good stewards to our public and at least advising them when we're partnering with this group to allow these to be used out there, that we're not giving people the wrong idea or the wrong impression of you can use these anywhere you want when you really can't. So I, I think with all that being said, I think we can work pretty quickly. I think we can work with, with planning to get some of the research done on some of the cities. They're all fairly easy to find information on, so that shouldn't be difficult for us to do some reference checks. And if Ms. Crawford can provide that as well, that would certainly make it speed it up if we needed to contact specific people. A few weeks. That's the best I could tell you. I don't participate in it very long. I think, again, most of it's going to be a, a lot of dialogue that I think we can get through, so.
Oh, perhaps we can bring this back on our workshop, April 10th?
Madam Mayor.
I, you don't have to have finals.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Or you have a draft progress report.
Yes, we can definitely do that. I thought you meant final. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
To that point, it's, it's her business, right? It's not ours. So we don't need to, nor is it within our purview, just to add language on who should wear helmets in wind and where the bike should go and for how long, and that's all yours. And everything's yours, and you've got the business desire to make sure that's all done properly. You could do this entire business without the city's permission anyway. Right? And so we appreciate being a partner, but I don't think we're going to try and recreate conditions and put a whole bunch of hoops you have to jump through. Merely defining "use of city property" was really the only thing that certainly needed some definition, but we don't want to impose a bunch of obligations on you that you've already addressed. That's outside the scope of us, I think.
Madam Mayor. If I can just piggyback on Councilman Burton's comments a little bit, I guess, again, you have the draft MOU in your packet tonight. I would ask you, if you have any concerns with the, the terms there, but generally, I think the 10th is definitely doable. And just a little bit, the other thing that you asked, Madam Mayor, I have talked to city of Boise staff. They are aware of Limebike. They're in a little bit different situation than we are, though. They do have a university, and they also have a current system in place that they are a little bit concerned about. They made some significant investment there, and, and a lot of these other communities have multiple providers, but that is causing them a little bit of concern about competition and wanting to encourage investment that's already been made in their community and the expansion of that, and what does this look like for them? So they didn't share with me, and I don't know their timeframe, but I know that there's some concerns there. Just the other point that you brought up, I have been doing some research, and again, some of it's been, you know, articles have been sent to me and some of it I've been, I've found from other, not so much similar-sized communities, you know, suburban-type communities, but, but have been researching this and some of the other issues maybe that, that come up and some of the success stories as well. So I can do a little bit more of that, but I think we're, we're generally there. But again, I'd put that, my first comment on council, if you have any concerns, this will make it go a lot, Mr., I've been working with Mr. Baird in Legal 2, and he's looked at this, and the Parks Director's looked at it, so it's probably largely going to look like what you see here. So, yeah, I don't know what else we would add at this point, just to make sure it's some terms, some definitions. Another one that I pointed out, "public way," what does that mean? A public way? So some definitions to the agreement, just so we're on the same page, but the 10th is definitely doable, in my opinion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'm in favor of this regardless of what surrounding towns do. So I don't, I wouldn't want them to, they don't have to necessarily get the entire Treasure Valley started on the same day. And I understand why Boise would have some concerns, but we don't have a current bike ride, bike share system here, and we really could use one, I think would be beneficial to our entire community. So yes, it would be great if all of the other cities participated, but I don't, I don't see it as a necessity. And I'm pretty sure they could put up a geo-fence when people are taking the bike and they, that will say, "You cannot park this bike here." So driving over and parking it into Boise or somewhere else shouldn't really be that much of a concern. But again, it's not our problem. That's part of their problem, that they're going to have to figure out and deal with, or they charge the customers by that or not. The only other thing that I would say, which we've already discussed, would be, and I don't know if this needs to be in the MOU or not, putting in some language in the app regarding Idaho law, or driving law, bike-riding law, or e-bike law, so that people have an understanding of it. So other than ACHD's permission, the rest of the Treasure Valley can, they can come along with us, or they can follow suit later.
Hey, I think you get a general sense of what council thinks. So we'll put it back on our agenda on April 10th and with either a final or, or not. Thank you, Megan, for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, Item 9, under Action Items. First up is our Public Works Director on the SCADA, Staffing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. We met last week. Before you is what we believe to be a very critical budget amendment for the Public Works Department and our operations effort to move forward and hire the adequate resources to help us manage the SCADA system. I think we've pounded it pretty good. I would be happy to stand for any questions, if there's any outstanding ones.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Madam Mayor, thank you, Madam Mayor. There isn't any added public comment or any information else that we've received. I'd like to thank Dale and his team for their patience and move that we approve the budget amendment for a not-to-exceed amount of $108,987.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Thanks, Alex. Item 9B is final plat for H-2018-0014.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be with you. This application is for a final plat. The property, the site is, consists of 12 and a half acres approximately, zone CC and R4, located at 2780 West McMillan Road. The applicant has applied for a final plat consisting of one commercial lot and one residential lot. The applicant has agreed to all conditions of the final plat with the exception of Condition 5C. Condition reads, "The applicant shall provide a 25-foot landscape buffer along the McMillan Road frontage, Block 2, Block 1, Lot 2, Block 1, in a common lot. Shall provide a note on the final plat indicating who is to maintain the easement area and the common lot. The applicant has requested that the landscape buffer be placed in an easement as opposed to the, the common lot. UDC Section 113B7 requires that a street landscape buffer in a residential subdivision be placed in a common lot for the purposes of maintenance of that common lot. As the lot is undeveloped and is technically not in a residential subdivision, staff is of the opinion that the intent of the code would be met with an easement instead of the common lot if the applicant can provide documentation of who is responsible for the maintenance of the landscape buffer." With that, Madam Mayor, staff will stand for any questions.
I'd love to ask you some really complicated questions.
I'm ready.
Counsel, any, any questions? Okay, does the applicant have anything to add? Counsel? If there's no questions for staff or the applicant, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to approve file number H-2018-0014 as presented in the staff report.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I guess a question for Cameron. Have they provided the necessary documentation that we feel like that the common area is going to be maintained in perpetuity?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, that is yet to be determined based upon your, your vote. So that, that this is, would be agreeable to the applicant. So they're, they're aware of it, and then it would get that in the agreement.
It would have to be submitted before final plat, before they sign it.
Okay. Any further questions? So that, that detail will be provided before it is put on final plat. Okay? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes, most caring. Item 9C is a final plat modification request for H-2018-0021.
Excellent. Madam Mayor, members of the council, this, this site is located north of West Chittenden Boulevard, west of North Spurwing Way. Just a little history, the final plat was approved by council in 2008 along with several time extensions since that time, but has not yet been signed by the city engineer and recorded. The applicant requests approval to modify the landscape- The applicant requests approval to modify the landscape plan, approve for the subdivision to remove the pathway connection to the golf course planned between Lot 7 and 9, Block 1, and the requirement for Ballard lighting along the pedestrian pathway. Removal of the pathway connection is due to a change in ownership of the golf course. New owners feel it would be a liability to allow a direct pedestrian access to the private golf course from the residential neighborhood and a disruption to the golf course. Remover of the, removal of the Ballard lighting requirement is due to a change in city code that no longer requires pathway lighting to be provided, and the applicant feels streetlights within the development provide adequate illumination of the path. The applicant proposes to add an archway entryway feature and water fountain as an alternative amenities within the development. And staff recommends approval. That will stand for any questions.
So, the pathway connection and any of the open space that it represented doesn't impede on their required open space?
Madam Mayor, that, that is correct.
Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Cameron, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I guess I'm, I'm looking at the access to the golf course, maybe similar to how we look at open space in other neighborhoods, and we believe in pathway connectivity, and I guess I'm, I'm trying to recall a time that we have said we're not going to, we're going to remove a pathway requirement because the neighboring neighborhood doesn't want the public walking through to their open space. So, can you get us a little educated about the discussion that, that staff have had about this request? And, and I didn't see here if it was something you guys support, but help, help get me educated.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, great question. So, I think this, this does hinge a little bit around the, the fact that it is, you know, the golf course itself. So, you know, is it, is there, you know, is access needed to a private golf course? I think is kind of where we, where it hinges. Staff, you know, has reviewed it, and we, we do recommend approval, but you know, there's, I understand Councilman Cavanagh's concern, you know, of connectivity. That is a, that is an issue.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Picturing that section of the course, I'm guessing it's really not a safe place for someone to be walking, but I am curious, with a subdivision being built on a golf course, assuming people would want to be members, how are they going to get their carts out to the course if the pathway is gone? Do you have to go completely around and over?
Madam Mayor.
Does anyone want to answer that question?
I've got a clarifying question to that.
Oh, you have a clarifying question to that, yes.
Madam Mayor, the pathway at issue was only the pathway in that lower southeast corner that would go to the course. It's not the pathway on the northern portion of this project. That pathway remains. It's just that connectivity to the private course where you're going to get hit in the head.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, that is correct. It's just this, this portion here.
So, what happens to that angled green space?
Madam Mayor, I believe, I could be corrected here, this is where there is proposal for the fountain and/or, you know, other amenity in that area. Looks to me that that is a, an open space there.
It looks like it's on a road. Is the applicant here?
Madam Mayor, having been out there recently, the fountain is closer to the entrance. It's, I can't remember if it's right out the entrance or on the curve. I'm wondering if they're going to just let the golf course take care of that as they care for the course, because that is right, yeah, right kind of where you could get hit in the head.
Sherry, you want to maybe answer that? We, we could make up our own stories. I, I think it's going to be where a fountain of, or a statue of maybe Mr. Bird.
You?
No.
Sherry Stiles, Engineering Solutions. Mayor DeVere, Councilwoman Roberts. It, it is landscaped. It is, there's a tee box right next to it, and they, they kind of wanted it to buffer the residential homes against the tee box, so they didn't have, I think they may have it maybe surrounded with like some split rail fence or something, but we tried to get out of the requirement back in 2007, and, and I mean, the golf course is really, it's like a natural barrier, because they absolutely do not want the liability of random people coming out and just coming in the middle of the golf course. So, that was the reason for the request. We, we thought it had been taken care of, but we, we do have the plat signed. It has been signed by the city engineer, is waiting at Hady County, the Hady County. So, we're hoping to get it recorded. They've been waiting a long time. We've all been waiting a long time.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So, I'm not sure that, so the little corner of green there, what, what's to become of it? Just...
Mayor DeVere, Councilman Palmer, it will, it will appear to be probably part of the golf course. It is still a buffer from that tee box, but I didn't get any pictures of it, but I do believe that they do have some split rail around it, and it's more just meant as an open area, so they don't have people just walking directly by, behind their homes.
Who will maintain it?
Pardon?
Who will maintain it?
I, I don't know that for sure, but I would imagine it probably might become part of the, the golf course maintenance. They'll probably also maintain the, the other open spaces within the subdivision.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Maybe if I stop mowing my lawn, my neighbor will take care of it.
I doubt it.
Might try it. This just seems goofy. I mean, I'd love for those lots to be bigger and just go to the corner to solve that problem, but I think if you're going, if, if that's part of the subdivision's open space, there ought to be a connection to it. I don't know how the law works and being able to, hey, if we don't want this, can we give it to Spurwing and they maintain it? Or if you have, need your 10%, and that fulfills it, and without it, it doesn't have it? I don't know. It just, this just seems goofy to me. I, not having a path to it, but even if there's a path to it, it's puny, and in the way of the golf course. Totally understand the golf course's position, not wanting a connection to it. I mean, it wouldn't be their open space, the golf course itself, they wouldn't be able to go out and have a picnic on, on the golf course. So, understand not wanting to have a connection to it, but if there's this little, and I don't know what the size of that would be, I'm really just rambling, because I don't understand what's going on. Or what to do with that, because it...
Madam Mayor.
I hope they mow it, but can we, yeah.
Yeah, maybe the neighbors will do it.
So, do you need that open space for your open space percentage?
No, we have over 20%.
Yeah. So, why wouldn't you just split it off and put it in those lots?
They really don't want the lots to butt up to that tee box. They have a, they'll have a wrought iron fence along their lot line, and...
Instead of a split rail?
Well, I believe their landscape plan was required wrought iron fence adjacent to the golf course.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'm, yeah, not, I'm not in love with this, this plan. I think that the pathway should be put in, and what if, what if this guy right here lives, goes into the golf course, and he wants to walk over there? He should be able to walk over to the golf course, and, or if they don't, they could put up a sign that says, "This is private property. If you're a member of the golf course, you can come in. If not, stay out." But I think that, that the whole point, this is part of Spurwing Greens that's connected to Spurwing Golf Course, and I, it should have a connection, direct.
No, I think this is the executive nine. Is this the executive nine?
I, I don't know what backs up on Chinon.
On Chinon, yeah. Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay.
This is about's number one green and number two tee box.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Do we feel more comfortable if we got confirmation and who's going to maintain that little piece? I mean, if we got confirmation that Spurwing was going to maintain it, would that be an easier decision for us to make?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
To field the question, I, no, is my answer, the, the corner maintenance isn't changed with or without this amendment of the final plat. That corner maintenance is an obligation of the Olive Trees subdivision. The wrinkle they're creating upon themselves is how to get the mower or any maintenance vehicles without a pathway. The pathway probably shouldn't have been in there in the first place. The clubhouse is 100 meters north, just down the street, and you're at the clubhouse. So, you really don't need to do anything with a pathway like that to get anywhere other than to go get hit in the head. A private course, because the clubhouse is straight north up the street. So, I would, I would support the final plat amendment, because the obligation to maintain the corner remains the same. Pathway doesn't make any sense. So, it's, it's better as amended.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Sherry.
And, Councilman Borton, they, it is going to be owned by the Olive Tree at Spurwing subdivision as one of their common lots. Whether it will be turned over to the Spurwing Corporation to maintain as part of that, whether they have agreement for them to maintain it as part of that, they've got, you know, it's all open, all along the, the east boundary there, totally 100% open, and they have those golf court, golf court, cart paths that, that go around it. This project is 100% built. We've submitted our surety. We have a warranty surety in place. It has been signed by the city engineer. We have record drawings that have been submitted. They were hoping that they would have lots to build on last fall, but this is just the last item. We, we believed it had been taken care of by other parties. We've been led to believe that it had been, and got to this point, and it's not approved. So, that's where we're at. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think the, the pathway connection makes any sense. It makes less sense than the corner that is behind everything. I just don't want the, the phone calls to say, "Why did you set up a weed patch behind my lot?"
I can basically guarantee you that will not be a weed patch. I'll, I'll mow it myself.
Good.
Madam Mayor.
She has to trespass on the private course.
Right. In addition to the, to Sherry's guarantee, the association has to mow it, right? They've got a provision to maintain that, the same as the, all the rest of the common area. Perpetuity, that's where the obligation comes to maintain that little corner lot.
Yeah.
And if, and if this modified final plat never came to us today, that obligation would be the exact same.
Any other questions for Ms. Stiles?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Just comment that if it was, if it was anywhere else, this would be harder, but, I mean, the size and the fact that it's there next to Spurwing, the odds of it not getting mowed are slim to none. So, as weird as it is, it's not that concerning, it's just a misconnection in my mind that's going to bug me later, but I'm sure it'll be fine.
Any further questions? Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
Even though it's not a public hearing, but you bet, you raised your hand, you was very polite. You, if you'll state your name for the record.
Kent Brown, 3161 East Springwood. And again, I don't have a dog in this fight, but I have done stuff next to Spurwing Golf Course, and they're pretty particular about the access. Up in the northeast corner of the portion that recently got built up there, we, we did the golf, did a tennis court and that kind of stuff for them, and their access to their, their fairways is critical, and so, they really do need that closed, and I can say that they probably have put that restriction to keep away from the tee box. I have hardly ever golfed, I think three times, but I know that they get kind of touchy about how close you can be to the tee box, and so, if that makes Councilman Palmer feel a little more easy, you know, so when you throw your club, you're not going to hit a house. How's that? But the, the golf course, the golf course is really pretty restrictive of their, their access, so, just personal experience from doing that. Thanks.
Okay, council, any further information needed from the applicant's representative or staff? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve item 9C, H-2018-0021, the modified final plat as presented with the additional of the archway entryway and the water fountain features as presented by the applicant and staff.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Did you want to suggest that a note is on the plat that we didn't do this?
The Tammy note?
There's no further discussion. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you, and thank you for this interesting modification. Okay, item 10A is under our finance department.
Should be guessing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I want to say thank you for allowing us to present to you the annual process to request fund transfers from our previous fiscal year's results. So, today, we are going to present to you the fund balance report, which should have been submitted to you within the documents provided by the clerk for this agenda item. You also received a memo that has the three proposals that I am presenting to you for consideration, and then, at the very end, I just want to touch on some of the future considerations that we have, kind of on the quote-unquote whiteboard, that the city is discussing for future expenditures. So, with that, I'm going to go into our first slide, which is our fund balance report. This, again, was presented to you in your documents. This is the actual results from fiscal year 2017. For all the governmental funds, we have a little over $53.4 million available in our fund balance, and we have the funds listed below for your consideration or for your information. For tonight's discussion, I'm going to ask that you kind of focus on the far-left bar, which is called the general fund, a little bit over $32 million available in our fund balance. The impact fees, we won't touch. Those are restricted and mandated by other... The impact fees we won't touch. Those are restricted and mandated by other laws. We will also touch a little bit on public safety and capital improvement. But for the time being, if I can get you to focus on the general fund, right now, we have a little over $32 million. So with that, I'm going to show you what the 32, how the $32 million is distributed. Again, for the general fund, oh, one fund, we have 200, a little over $202,000 for unspendable. What that means is we have to classify certain dollars within our fund balance that we can or cannot touch, or they have limitations based on rules or regulations. In this case, you have money deposited for a certain reason, so we cannot touch that money because it's already quote unquote spent. So we have to classify that as non-spendable. We don't have any restricted. We do not have any committed at this time for the general fund. And you have a little over 1.7 million assigned of the 32 million. The assigned dollars represent the carryforward amounts that we presented to you in fiscal year 18. So again, we don't want to touch that. We have that allocated for contracts that have been signed, and we need to allow the general fund to continue their operations. So we assign those dollars accordingly. So that leaves us a little, a little over $30.5 million in quote unquote unassigned classification. So you're probably asking, so what do we have $30 million for in the unassigned category? Very valid question. And this is how we distribute the $30 million in your general fund. So again, this is just the unassigned portion. We're taking out the other two pieces because we can't touch those. So of the $30.5 million, we have a little over $15.8 million in reserves. That's our best practice that we've had here at the city for four months of operating expenses for the general fund. We believe that's the best practice that we should keep employing, and I'm representing that here tonight. I think we should continue that best practice today. Last week, I submitted to you an email regarding the comprehensive financial plan with the details of the report and also the recommendations of how we should allocate the balances within the email string. And if you recall, there's a general fund allocation, and I had in there of $9.3 million that I believe we should allocate of the unassigned, unassigned fund balance to future capital projects. And that's what the capital, comprehensive financial plan does. It allows us to see what we have in the future, allows us to plan for the future. And the recommendation that I had on the email and tonight is, I believe, we, we need to assign $9.3 million of the unassigned for the future projects that I submitted to you last week on the email. So you're probably doing some math and you're going, this doesn't quite equal 30 million. You would be correct. We still have $5.3 million to equal the 30 million. So the question is, what do we do with the, the $5.3 million? And that's where the memo is, and that's why I'm here for you today. The memo that I presented to you states information that we do this on an annual basis. We try to get here in March every year. The treasurer of the city and the CFO of the city presents to you their recommendation. So I stand here tonight with three proposals for you to consider. We wait until March because we want to make sure you have the audited financials from the prior fiscal year. 30 days ago, you had the auditor here, Kevin Smith from I.A.D. Bailey. He presented to you the results, and I was here a week before that with the actual results, results as well. So with all the information complete, I have proposed to you three considerations for the fund balance transfer. The first one is to transfer 2.6, a little over $2.6 million from our general fund unassigned to the capital improvement fund, Fund 55. This follows the city ordinance. As, as noted, I also included, included the ordinance on your memo for your reference purposes. So again, this is something we do every year for consideration, and I am proposing that we have this proposal in front of you with the transfer as well. Proposal number two is to transfer 1 million from the general fund unassigned to the capital improvement fund. Oh, I apologize, to the public safety fund. My recommendation for this is based on what I've seen on the comprehensive financial plan of the vehicle replacements that are coming down the pipe for the public safety divisions, so police and fire. I believe if we start sending some money aside now, because we have the ability to, when the future council, one or two, three, four years, has a proposal to you for consideration to replace some of the vehicles, we have a revenue source we can tap into, aside from the general funds for that fiscal year. And then the third proposal I have for you today is a commitment of $1.5 million within the general fund. So the monies will stay in the general fund. It just gets moved to a different classification. So instead of being unassigned or unallocated, it will now be committed for the future use of a self-funding consideration. This is to kind of close up the loop of what has been presented to you in the last two years. Your HR director, Crystal Ritchie, and then your HR benefits manager, Christine Barney, thank you. They have presented to you various, she's going to get me tomorrow. They presented to you a handful of times the topic of self-funding, the considerations, the benefit committee's discussions of that. This here kind of closes the loop to set the money committed, not spent, it's just sitting in the general fund as a committed option if the council does consider going into self-funding. So it's still there. It's just committed. So those are the three proposals that I have presented to you for your consideration. So this is the slide I showed you of where the 5.3 or 5.3 million sits as quote unquote unallocated. If you consider and approve the three proposals that I've submitted to you for tonight, this is how the slides, the graphs would look. So we would move 1 million to the fund 08, so that's our public safety. And then we would move or quote unquote commit 1.5 to your self-funding commitment. And then the 2.6 million would be transferred to Fund 55. So that would still then leave a little over 187,000, quote unquote, unallocated. So that would still make up your total balance of 30.5 million. So again, I stand here to ask for your approval for the three proposals. Again, the first one is to reduce the general fund by 2.6 million to follow the ordinance, and that would increase the capital improvement fund by 2.6. Proposal number two is to reduce the general fund by 1 million and transfer those funds to the public safety fund for future use and consideration. And the third proposal I have for you tonight is, again, a no change to the general fund. It's just a commitment of the 1.5 million to kind of close the loop on the discussions that the HR department has presented to you in the past. So of your $53 million, if we were to approve the proposals as I have in front of you, this is how the $53 million would be distributed. Again, the general fund would be reduced by a couple million. The capital improvement fund would be increased by 2.6, and the public safety would be increased by 1.3 million. So again, 53 still stays intact. We haven't lost any of that. It's still 53 million. We just transferred the funds within different funds. So with that, this is the general fund. I now have a little bit of money in committed. That's that 1.5 million. The non-spendable didn't, did not change. Your assigned did not change. Your unassigned is now just 25 million because we moved some money from that. So those are the three proposals I have for you. These are the considerations I also want to bring to your attention. We have a lot on the plate of considerations. We have unfunded CFP projects. I submitted to you the comprehensive financial plan last week. If you saw some of the graphs, the second five years, they don't look that great. That means we don't have enough funding for the requests that your departments have submitted. So we always have to think about that. We have impact fee projects. Every time we approve and construct some impact fees, projects, we have ongoing operating we need to consider. We have SROs. I believe you are, you've been presented with some new schools in the city. So new schools equals new SRO. So we have new expenses there and some other considerations that I think will be present, presented to you. We had animal control here. A couple, I think it was last month, they're presented to you for some considerations. We have expansion to the south, so I don't need to remind you on that one. We have Ada County discussions that we're talking about every day. We have ACHD projects. We have some transportation discussions. We have some road discussions. So again, we have some future considerations we always have to take into, in consideration here of what we do with our fund balances and how we manage them. I believe the three proposals that I have in front of you today keeps the city in sound condition. Again, we get to do this every year. We get to present to you considerations every year. But with that, I stand for any questions of the three considerations that I've presented to you tonight.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Two clarification points on this. Your proposal, and correct me if I'm wrong, does not create any new spending authority, and it does not create any binding allocation of resources.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, what we're doing tonight does not commit any money to any spending authority. The binding part is loosely termed. We do have a commitment. So once you, we will take votes on this from you. You are committing money to the self-funding possible project, but it doesn't mean you can't uncommit that in a future time period. You're just saying, let's just put it there for the time being. Let's not touch that. So you're committing those funds at this time, but in a future meeting, we could always move it back to unassigned and apply that to a future capital project.
It's not binding.
Councilman Burton, correct.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I have a fourth proposal. So this 2.64 million comes from permit fees. And it comes from the development community. We're paying a premium for a service that they're not receiving. They're receiving a service, but we anticipated, from this, these funds, we anticipated $170,000 in excess revenues from community development. We, in reality, got 2.64 million. Our anticipation for this fiscal year was 1 million. We've reached that. We're now estimating 2.8 million. So the development community is paying a lot of money for a service, and our community development department does the best they can with what they've got. But as we made super clear during the interview process for Cameron, that this was a situation we wanted solved. We wanted to figure out what resources they needed and provide them to them so that he can provide a successful service and make us the premier community development department, at least in the valley. I mean, it's embarrassing that someone would rather develop in Boise because the city of Boise has less policies and procedures and everything to have to deal with. And understanding that they may need more staff, they may need new technologies, new processes. And so that's going to come at a cost. But there is over 2.5 million of money we didn't anticipate that we'd have. And at least a portion of that should go towards solving some of these issues. So my proposal would be that we hold off and wait until Cameron and his team have had a chance to fully vet and, and plan out exactly what they would need and be able to sell us on what it would take to be able to reach the, the quality level of service that we expect any of the other departments to provide for their customers, and then make those decisions. And then, when we have the full picture before us of what community development is going to need to provide for their customers who are paying this money, who provided us this money, then we'll have that in our picture. We can then consider all the other options and divide up the money however council chooses. But right now, we don't have the specifics, and maybe Cameron can add some to the conversation on this.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, appreciate the, the discussion. We do look forward to that opportunity to, to outline what our needs are soon. So we appreciate, we appreciate that consideration and I think that it is founded, absolutely.
There are questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Todd, the $2,641,404, you said that was, is that from ordinance? And what, what is that number based on?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum, the ordinance on the memo, if you, it's the second bullet point. So request number one is an annual proposal directed by ordinance 19, you know, and, and the ordinance that says excess revenue from the development services funds. So those are community developments. So it's the excess revenues.
We're just saying.
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, you had like 192,000 left in your scenario? Back again. 197,000, excuse me. So what would that, what would you, you have no proposal for that? Just making round even numbers everywhere and...
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Mylum, I have no proposal for that as this is a moment in time, and next year, the number will look different. 197,000, we can easily allocate to many future capital projects. As the comprehensive financial plan shows you, the second five years is not fundable where we stand. So every year, we'll stand in front of you, in front of you with a consideration. And I'm comfortable at this moment of leaving 197, quote unquote, unallocated. We do have budget amendments every year that come in front of you, and this is how we would tap into that resource if we needed to find funds to meet any amendment purposes.
Madam Mayor. Ms. Little Roberts.
Mr. Palmer, I'm certainly sympathetic to the growth that we are experiencing in our community development, but with this rapid growth that has left us with these funds available, I really think that we need to focus on public safety because with this growth, we are also stretching our public safety very thin. And with replacements, I know we're short of staff. I think it's really critical that we make sure that that funding is there for the future. We're doing another fire station. Last I knew, the, we had limited years that we could pay for that without setting more funds aside. I know that we're behind staffing in police and trying to play catch up there, but as our population continues to grow, we're going to continue to have needs to keep our people safe. And, and I think that is critical to maintain and increase the funding there for future needs. I would like to see us proceed with this, at least with those. And I also know it's critical to continue looking at self-funding, which may or may not be our end result. But if that's the most economical way to go, to set that money aside is also very important to that process, to have the ability to do it if that is our decision. If we don't set that money aside and we decide that that is the best way to go, we won't have that option in place. So I would like to see us proceed.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
To kind of dovetail on, on Councilwoman Little Roberts' comments, the recommendation, all, all three of them I support for several reasons. The one with regard to self-funding, one of the things we've tried to do when we've got big expenditures is we save as we go. And when they're big numbers, you have to do that incrementally. And this is a big number. And, and my point earlier on about it not being an irreversible allocation, if the decision, there's a lot of vetting and discussion down the road about self-funding. But if that decision were to occur down the road, we would have had to have started to, to build up that reserve now. So it seems to be appropriate to do this now in light of the fact that we can, we can reverse the decision down the road if we don't self-fund. The policy of allocating the excess revenues to capital improvement has been around for quite a while, and there's been years where there's been a deficit and there's been nothing available to transfer. Why I think that's continually important to do that transfer for a capital improvement is so we don't get of the mindset that these proceeds are available for recurring expenses, right? Labor costs are different than capital expenditures. So we're taking a revenue, revenue stream that is finite, and it's, it's a single year revenue stream created by excess revenues. So it's being allocated to spend money on one-time purchases. It's sort of been the, the policy that we've done for a number of years to avoid the ability to think that we've got 2.6 million that is available for, for new employees, for example, because you don't have a recurring revenue stream of 2.6 year over year, but you would be creating a recurring expenditure. So a decision to allocate to capital improvement has been appropriate. I think it continues to be appropriate. And to Councilwoman Little Roberts' comments, we've heard about a fire truck every year and, and this level of service is that we've got to maintain. That's our obligation. When we, when we approve these large developments on our, on our edges among elsewhere, we're making a commitment to provide those capital needs for our city to, to service those areas. So I'm supportive of all three of your recommendations for those reasons.
Madam Mayor.
And I would just add, it has allowed us to be able to save before we spend and continue to be on a cash continue to be on a cash basis. Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Todd, are the, what pays for the staff in community development now? Is it the same revenue stream as produced these funds?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, at this moment, the community development fund is generating enough revenue from the permit sales and the planning services to pay for their salaries 100 percent. But, they can, we can use our property taxes to pay for them because they all reside within the general fund, which is one pot of money, but right now, they are generating enough to pay for their own salaries at this time.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So, with that information understood, that's, it's already these dollars that are providing for the service in community development. In my mind, the excess revenues should have been less because they should have had the tools necessary to provide the level of service that we would expect them to. So, really, the question today should be, whatever the dollar amount is, less from the 2.464 million, not, we're creating, if we were to spend some of this on additional staff or whatever tools they may need, that, you know, we're creating a continuous need for this money every year. Well, that's true, well, so is everybody that's over there right now. If, if the economy were to go down and in the couple of years, instances in which we have had to use general funds to supplement the community development department, if that were to happen again, then the reality of the situation is this board should take the responsibility of letting people go when they're not necessary. So, I mean, another thing I'd like to see some of this money go towards is establishing a fund to ensure that if things were to slow down, we'd be able to maintain, you know, a staff level for a period of time to, if things were to reverse quickly, it's cheaper to retain somebody than to have to fire and rehire and go find and retrain and deal with all that. But, that's, you know, a conversation for down the road, but in the meantime, these funds are here to provide for that service. They don't have the people and the technologies that they need to be able to fully provide the service. So, a portion of this, it only makes sense should be retained there to provide that service. And if things were to go down and we don't have multimillion dollars of excess revenues every year, or if we were to have none, then that's another conversation, that hard decision that elected officials sometimes have to make.
Madam Mayor, if I could, Councilman Palmer, I again appreciate the comments. I just want to remind you that the $2.6 million represents a one-time amount. So, think of it as you put the 2.61 million in your pocket once. If you hired, if you allow Cameron to hire the resources that you speak of, you can only make that payment once. It's not like it's going to be there in 2019, it's not going to be there in 2020 because it's a one-time funding into your pocket. So, it's not, I can't guarantee you 2.6 million every single year, but I can guarantee this 2.6 million one time, and that's why we normally go to a one-time expenditure model. So, we use it for the capital investment. So, if you ask Cameron to invest in the resources, added additional personnel, submit soft, software for ongoing expenses, your 2.6 million could be used once. Then, in 2019, you're going to have to find those extra dollars to pay for that ongoing expenditure. So, I just want to clarify that 2.6 is a one-time, you put it in your pocket once, you use it once, and that's why we normally go to the capital improvement fund, parks or capital projects investment portfolio.
Madam Mayor. And because it's the, again, all the revenue that comes from that department is already paying for itself, that's all one-time money anyway. That money can't, is not guaranteed to always be there. I mean, we, we may get to a point in the economy where no more development's happening, then therefore, there's no more permit fees, and we're having to subsidize it anyway or let people go. That's the reality of that department, no matter the situation. And in this case, we have a situation where the, the development community is asking for service in an enormous way. And so, that, just the reality of that department is it has to have in its consideration that it, it may have to be fluid depending on the economy and the development economy. I mean, if it were to stop today, we could fund them for a period of time without having to use general funds money. I mean, that doesn't change the fact that it's, every year, it's always one-time money, and it happens to pay for itself and then some. Right now, we have a level of service that's being demanded that we cannot provide because we haven't budgeted for it, because we had no idea. We anticipated 170,000, we anticipated almost exactly providing for what was going to be needed. We are severely under-providing for what the economy is demanding. So, we need to raise that while the economy is demanding it, lower it when it's not.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
To, to that point, for the purposes of today, again, it's, it's an allocation, at least for the reasons that, for me, why I think it's appropriate, but to your point, Councilman Palmer, I think we're going to have those types of discussions in June, and I haven't seen the budget proposal and enhancement requests of community development. Those principles that you've talked about might be reflected in there, there might be a presentation to us that requests additional funding, whether it's personnel or capital in community development to try and increase their service level, all of which, at that point in the summer, we'll review and consider in relationship to other requests, and we may say, that makes great sense. Let's, we can reverse, we can decide not to fund public safety, for example, because, or, or the self-funding allocation, because we, we find the proposal for community development makes sense, and it gets funded at that time. We don't have to make that decision right now, this isn't a fork in the road, at least as I see it. I just see us taking the consistent path to plan accordingly, and if what you're saying is what we hear and it makes sense and community development articulates that, council might decide to do something else this summer.
And, and if I can, this is from the audited report. So, your general fund, the 28 million, 28.8 million, that is this year's budget, and, and so, some of what they may need to do this budget year, there are excess monies that can be considered for the needs that you'll hear from community development in addressing a plan moving forward. So, the, I think Mr. Borden stated it well, that this is, this is with what we have in the audit and what you're suggesting is what we have today.
Madam Mayor, we heard from Dale, a budget amendment for a very urgent need. We have a very urgent need in community development. I, I'm not asking for months, I'm anticipating a budget amendment to be able to spend some of this money rather than waiting for October because the demand is there, there, I mean, dang near busting down the doors with the need for a service.
But, that's a different conversation than what is in front of you today.
Madam Mayor, this, if I may, this is the exact conversation. The thing is, if we start making these other commitments, then we have to go, I mean, we may commit to, you know, the self-funding idea by allocating some money to it. If we're going to commit to those ideas, we need to move forward with those ideas, not come back in June and July and say, hey, you know what? Cameron came before us and convinced us that we did need to go ahead and do this, so we're going to reduce that and change it, and I'm just asking for a matter of weeks, I don't know how much time Cameron needs to be able to put together a budget amendment with, here's what our needs are, here's what would give us this level of service.
Mr. Palmer, you'll hear it sooner than you might expect, so you'll have that information soon.
Madam Mayor, so, you're asking me to make a decision on this now so that sooner than I expect, I could make a decision to maybe change this later?
So, Mr. Lavoy, maybe you can help, and this is the audited numbers, and in your general fund resides this year's budget and some of the, the unanticipated revenue that's been collected this year, as well as what might be expended.
Madam Mayor, you are correct. So, as Mr. Palmer stated a few minutes ago, there are excess, we, I think, Mr. Palmer, we already have exceeded our expectations for the community development revenue projections, I believe. So, this year, we should have some, quote unquote, excess revenues if things still continue, as you stated. So, you will have some excess revenues this year that you could possibly tap into if Cameron wishes to present to you some budget amendments to satisfy the needs for fiscal year 18. So, I think you're correct.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Appreciate the conversation from council tonight. I think a lot of us are taking a look into our crystal ball and trying to get a grasp as to where we think things are headed, both in terms of department growth and demands on our city for insurance and emergency response. Appreciate the comments from all of council, and I guess, and I know that Cameron and Bruce are kind of discussing amongst themselves right now, but rather than just look into my crystal ball and guess, if you have some budget amendments that are coming, the mayor alluded to that something is coming sooner than we'd expect, can you help provide some clarity in our crystal ball about what your current needs, you anticipate, and what we may be asked to approve in the future?
Madam Mayor and Councilman Kavner, I would say imminent. We will, we will have information to you very soon, and based on that information and the direction we receive from you, we will, we'll have a plan forward for you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Just for clarification purposes, question. So, Cameron has going to have a budget amendment. We've got the money to cover that in our 2018 budget. This is $2,017 that we're talking about, and that's why we're allocating into these funds?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. I'm good with it.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Then, in light that this discussion is imminent, can we continue this to another I rarely quote my predecessor, but are we in a hurry? Or why are you in a hurry? How did he say it?
But, you're talking about 2018 funds, and this is 2017 funds. It's apples and oranges at this point.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
In light of an imminent budget amendment, which will get on the next agenda that you're ready to present it, in light of the fact that there's excess revenues available perhaps to fund a budget amendment, should it be warranted and justified, which we'll very soon find out, and everything else that was said, I move that we approve the annual fund balance transfer proposals, one, two, and three, as presented by our finance director.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Appreciate the motion from Councilmember Borden. I guess I wrap my head around the word imminent, and that, to me, seems it's coming very quickly, and I, for the sake of the council and the questions that have been raised, I am struggling to see what the imminent need for us to make a decision tonight, as opposed to, yeah, it sounds like that we could continue this for one week. I recognize we have a very lengthy agenda next week, but if merely to have all the questions answered and this body feel assured in their decision-making process, I would hate that we have a council member, council members, that don't feel they have the answers to all of their questions to make them feel confident in supporting staff's recommendation. I guess, I haven't heard a reason why we can't continue it for seven days.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Sorry, did you want to answer, I don't know if you need to answer?
No, I would like that.
But, I have a question that maybe, maybe can clarify this. Cameron, you currently have an excess revenue of around $1 million for fiscal year 2018. Is that correct? That was the number that I heard tonight from Councilwoman Palmer.
I see where you're headed.
Is your budget amendment going to be more than $1 million for fiscal year 2018?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Milam, that will, I hate to say it, but that'll largely depend on the direction you give us. Choose to go a certain route, it could be more or less.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And while it's a million right now, we're anticipating 2.8, but given that we had guessed it 170,000 and ended up with 2.6, who knows what's really going to happen? So, a one week or a two week, if next week's agenda, since we don't get draft agendas, is not, however you want to schedule it, but to just make the decision tonight, I mean, you know, what if, what if we decide with whatever is to be proposed, that it makes sense to establish a, well, I don't know, maybe it's part of his plan, you know, a rainy day fund to ensure that we can continue at a staff level if we don't have the necessary revenues in a given particular year? Just to make the decision right now, understanding that we can undo it later, just seems like a very government thing to do, kind of messy, when we could wait, have a better picture, and make a decision in a week or longer.
We're talking but different budget years. Mr. Lavoy.
Madam Mayor, I also just, again, appreciate the conversations. I mean, it sounds like we, again, we have some good stuff to talk about. I just want to remind you that this isn't the only budget amendment that might be presented to you in the next imminent days. We may have another budget amendment in non-imminent days, 35 days. So, if we continue this, let's just delay, possibly delay it until we have all the budget amendments done, then I should be standing in front of you in August, but I'm standing in front of you today for fiscal '17's results. So, in theory, I can perpetually just put this on, you know, kind of forever if we want to take onto consideration, let's wait until all budget amendments are done. But, again, this is '17's results, I'm asking for '17's monies to be allocated, and I wish I could promise to you that that would be the last amendment for fiscal year 18, but I can't promise you that. I don't know if there's a half a million dollar budget amendment emergency that might come along. Well, that's going to change all of our discussions here. Then, you could say, let's get back that money from this, let's put it over here, so we can continue to have this discussion many a time. We're not allocating money, as I think Mr. Borden said, we're not bound by all these decisions. We have the power to reallocate if we need to, if we need to get these funds. So, I just wanted to put my, I guess, my little 10 cents in there that we're not bound by all these decisions, and this one decision that Cameron brings to you might not be the last one, we have no idea what's around the corner in the next four months of the fiscal year for budget amendments.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, and to Todd's point, that makes sense, and, but because this future budget amendment, imminent budget amendment pertains to these dollars, the reason these dollars exist, I think it makes sense to wait until we know what this budget amendment, as opposed to any other budget amendment, has. And so, with that, I, as a substitute, I move that we continue this item to a future meeting at the mayor's discretion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Todd, so, I'm understanding this correctly, that the first motion to approve what you had recommended kind of gives us a clean stop for the audit from 2017.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Little Roberts, that is accurate. Finishes out our fiscal year '17 annual process with our financial management.
And, kind of a second half, if I may, Madam Mayor. So, then, we can still take into consideration what our potential budget proposals for 2018, but that keeps them cleaner and clearer potentially?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Little Roberts, you are correct. As Mr. Palmer stated, right now, we're projecting that some excess revenues, so we can take that in consideration of your current budget amendments to meet those amendment needs with fiscal year '18's potential excess revenues. And at, right now, '18's looking good. You're approving lots of permits, you're approving lots of development, they're coming in, we're generating good revenue. So, you could, in theory, use '18's excess revenues to utilize this revenues to pay for Cameron's resource requests at this time, and then keep it clean. '17's done, '16's done, '15's done, '14's done, all those fiscal years were done. Now, we can sit with '18 and manage '18's budget and the excess revenues, if there are any, in this fiscal year.
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, looking good in theory and air quotes. Madam Mayor, "looking good" in theory, and air quotes, are not as good as the monies in the bank from last year. And we don't know what the ask is. So whether it was last week that this came and we made a decision, or whether it's this week or next week, I don't think we're at any legal worry about whether the decision is made right now, or a week from now, or whenever the mayor puts it back on the agenda.
Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I don't support the substitute motion. I support the original one for the original reasons. We'll see what the budget amendment is, but I think we can take action now. Everything's before us now, so.
Madam Mayor.
Call the question.
Ms. Mylum.
I as well, and regardless of this 2017 money, is, it has going to have no bearing on whether or not we approve a budget amendment for 2018, as far as I'm concerned, so.
Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum?
The substitute motion?
Yes.
No.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Cavaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
No.
Okay, the motion failed. We have the original motion. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm 10B.
Madam Mayor, Mr. President, members of the council, I am before you tonight to bring you an update on the wastewater user rate ordinance rewrite that we have completed. Just to provide you with a little bit of context and background on this, you may remember, we had a customer complaint some time ago regarding the ordinance as it related to interpreting the language regarding the winter average that we calculate for the ordinance. At the conclusion of that, we were directed to go back and look at that ordinance, clean up the language that's in there, make sure it was understandable. We had completed that effort, and you may remember back a couple of months at this point, but Kyle Raddick brought that data back before you, kind of went through that ordinance line by line. I'm going to try and spare you that pain tonight and not do that. However, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on that section of the ordinance. For reference, it's ordinance 942 and 9424. You have this in your packets tonight. The language is unchanged on that, so we are asking for approval regarding that language. In conjunction with that, we are also going to be putting forward a resolution that speaks to the wastewater default use cap, as we're referring to it. This is the number of gallons that we would charge a customer in a situation where their account defaults to that. We have a draft resolution in your packet. The number that's in there is 4,600 gallons. I would ask perhaps for one more week to actually firm that number up. We're working with finance on that, and there is a little data that we continue to crunch on that. So our hope would be to bring that resolution with the final number close, which we expect to be close to that 4,600 to you. So the two actions I would request tonight really are approval of the ordinance rewrite and permission to bring that resolution back to you next week with the updated cap, which we suspect will be close to that 4,600 number, but might wiggle a little bit as we finalize that data analysis. So, and with that, I'll, I'll stand for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Alex. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaner.
Not seeing, not, don't see any questions, and I guess maybe a procedural question to make sure my motion is, is correct. If our goal is to continue the resolution to next week and approve the ordinance, I'm, I'm fine with that. I don't know if I need to do that in two separate motions? It needs to be together because it's a...
It might be cleaner.
Okay, so.
Madam Mayor.
I move that we continue our resolution number 18-2066 to next Tuesday, the...
Or second.
The third.
Third.
The third, April the 3rd.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue till next week. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes.
I'd move that we approve ordinance number 18-1768.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve 18, sorry, 18, Tuesday's... No, 1768. Sorry.
Madam Mayor.
You need to read this.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
So, proposed city of Meridian ordinance number 18-1768, and ordinance amending Meridian City Code Title IX, Chapter Four, Section Two regarding definitions, and repealing and replacing Meridian City Code Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 24 regarding wastewater user charges and providing an effective date.
Okay, you've heard this read by title. Would you like to hear it read in its entirety?
Madam Mayor, I think Ralph is looking for it on the agenda. It's 10B2. Give it to me both.
Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes must be carried. I'm 10C is under our legal department, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Neri.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Two items to discuss with you tonight briefly is, first, the request was to discuss the use of the old city hall property and potentially a partnership or agreement between the city and the Meridian Development Corporation in putting out an RFP for a development on that site. I attended a meeting last week with the MDC Property Committee. In addition to myself being present, Councilman Palmer was there, as well as Councilman Cavaner and Keith Watts, our purchasing manager. Very good discussion with MDC, lots of very broad ideas on what to do, but a real good discussion on the RFP process and how the city might accomplish this objective. We're pretty good at writing RFPs as well as MDC. We've done both, and, and I think the, the, the best part of the conversation, I think, was really identifying the different needs of the entities and what MDC is looking for, and we reviewed a recent RFP they did in regards to the properties on Main Street, 703 and 715 Main, and how those were done and what they were looking for in those projects. And we looked at the one we did a few years ago that the city crafted in relation to the old city hall, as well as seeking a proposal regarding hotel and entertainment facility, a performing arts center, excuse me. And what we really ended up with was really identifying where the differences are. And what MDC looks for, again, is, is that development in downtown, the impact on the community, how that furthers their mission on downtown development and bringing businesses and economic vitality to downtown core. And the city's RFP looked for all of those similar types of things, but had a more specificity of what we were wanting in that case. And in this one, I think the city and MDC were both on the same page, that we're really looking for broad-minded concepts. And the one difference that was really telling between the two RFPs is the city one that we had used before also got down to some more specific financial details. It was asking specifically for the proposer to show where they had done that type of work before, and how successful they had been at it, and the, their financial capability to perform the work, and the timetable in which to perform the work. And those were, were real pressure or telling points for the city to be at. And I apologize, Madam Mayor was also at the meeting, I forgot to mention that. So we had a, a good balance of, of interest there of both sides. What we left the meeting was, is we need to work with MDC on crafting that type of RFP that meets the city's needs. Ultimately, that would be approved by this council. Before we would put that out, we would work together with them on what would that look like. One of the things Mr. Watts really lended to the conversation was the criteria you're really trying to do is determine what does your scoring matrix look like? What are you trying to evaluate on? And, and for lack of a probably least artful way of saying it, is you don't want the most boring thing in the world to get the most points. So you want to make sure you get the points assigned to the areas that are of the greatest interest to you as the, as the council, so that way the proposers know what you're really interested in and what you really would like to see, and allow, again, creative opportunities or solutions being brought forward. The other piece that we need to determine, and we don't have to determine that tonight, but I do think we'll have some internal conversations, probably with some of you council members and the mayor, but what Mr., what Mr. Watts brought out was, you want to determine who's going to make that recommendation to you. Who's the committee that's going to score those, to evaluate those, to, to consider those proposals, and then bring their recommendation back to you? Is that, the way it's currently done at MDC, since the city doesn't do a lot of these, we build a lot of treatment plants and wells and things, not, not creative things, is at MDC, their entire board does that for the, their property committee, and that's, I think, about eight or nine people. And so we were thinking that that would be something, and we would be seeking input on, do you want it to be simply Meridian City and MDC members or some community members? I know when we did the RFP for city hall, we had a steering committee that included members of the community. So if that's a desire of this council, that's the input we're seeking. So then we could come back to you in, in a fairly short time with a draft proposal. Mr. Watts' suggestion was if we picked the committee first, they could help work through those specifics of the scoring, and, and would that make sense to that group? And then we could bring back to you the proposed RFP with the scoring criteria, and then if that, it's approved, then we can put that out on the street. So that's kind of where we're at with that. I think, again, committee first, then craft the scoring criteria, and in conjunction with that, sort of parallel with that is the RFP language and what we're seeking. Questions on that particular part of the topic?
Yes, Mr. Cavaner.
On that particular component, not necessarily questions, I've, I've got some thoughts about the committee makeup. I don't know if it was the appropriate time to talk about that as well, but it would seem appropriate to have scoring committee comprised of maybe two or three members from, you know, this council, two or three members from, from MDC, and then I think would make sense to have a citizen involved, and potentially maybe someone from outside Meridian or downtown, so potentially maybe someone from ACHD, ACHD board member, maybe a school district board member as well, people who've been involved in these types of RFP process in the past, so that way it's not overwhelming, but they could bring a lot of expertise to the, to the scoring, without maybe a bias about what's all happening in downtown.
Any other comments? I, I know there was discussion at the committee and, from MDC and, and a couple of people specifically that they had hoped to have on there, as well as that neutral party is a citizen, a business, and a downtown business owner that would be a neutral. Julia, I can't remember her last name, but we, we can bring some names and recommendations back to council. Any additional comments? Mr. Palmer?
Madam Mayor, so I had made that motion to keep the conversation going and allow both options of, of going the RFP route and selling it to progress. After attending that meeting, I, I think, you know, if, if, I, I wanted to contribute and really help if that, if the RFP process is what, you know, council ends up supporting, want it to be the best that it can be. And if that's the case, I feel like it's moving in that direction, especially with Councilman Cavaner's comments with the, you know, who would make up the scoring committee and whatnot. I still feel like there's, there isn't a way to satisfy my concerns for the disposal of that property, given that situation in the RFP process. If council would rather go that route, so be it. I'm happy to make sure that, or do my part to, to ensure that that process is the most effective possible. But I, I still feel like the auction process would be the best for us. So with that, Mr. Neri, do we, and reading through your memo, it doesn't seem like there's a, a codified way in which the auction has to take place? Can, can it be a live auction? Can there be an opportunity for, or an open bidding process at the least?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Palmer, you're correct. I mean, there's not a specific method on how the auction is done, and, and many of you may know, I mean, they're done in a variety of different ways. They are done in public auctions, they are done in other manners around the state. So that decision on how the auction occurs is a decision point for this council. I mean, again, we've only done a few, and the one we did I could think of, we didn't do a public auction, it was a, it was a written bid that was submitted based on a minimum price, and it was a closed bid, so you just bid on it and it was the highest one won. That one, we had one winner, because we only, or excuse me, only one bidder. But we certainly can vet out different processes that you'd like, if that's the direction you want to go. And if you wouldn't mind, I can just add for the record since we did, indicate we would talk about it. So the process of sell property can be done either to an entity that we can sell it or transfer it to that doesn't require the auction process, and that would be another governmental entity like MDC, or we can do it through the auction process, and there the requirement is, there's some noticing requirements, there's a requirement to get a minimum pri, or determine a minimum price, that's usually done through an appraisal process. We've done that before. And then there's a noticing process that's required, a public hearing, and Mr. Baird does these for our staff and basically indicated, we're talking about three months if we're talking about an auction process that it would take to go from the initial noticing to the final auction itself. So there's about a three-month window to do that, if that's the desire of the council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, that's my desire, but I'd like to see it done in a way that it's open bidding, so that they can bid against each other, you know, should anybody want to make sure that they get it, as opposed to putting in what they think may be the best and then getting outbid. But that's my thoughts. I'll stop talking and hear what everyone else has to say, so I can know whether this is even a viable option or if everybody wants RFP style.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavaner.
For, for clarification too, I think for the rest of the council is, while I've, I've continued been very resistant to this RFP process, I think it's important to support letting that process play through. If at the conclusion of it, the council isn't satisfied with the RFP proposal that the scoring committee ranked the highest, we don't feel it met what's best for our community, we aren't obligated to, to, to follow through. So if, if the RFP is for a big blue building and Councilmember Cavaner wanted a big red building, and we can, we can throw the whole process out, purple, and then sell it on the auction block, if that's deemed the most appropriate response from, from this committee. So I think it is important for our citizens that we include both downtown stakeholders, and I think MDC members are downtown stakeholders, I think our city council are downtown stakeholders as well, but finding some other people that maybe aren't associated so much with downtown, just to bring a, a different perspective to the applications, I think would continue to be beneficial.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And I'm totally comfortable with that process, because it gives us both options. And my consideration in, in ensuring both of them stayed open and moved forward was in, you know, the request that we move forward as their, as the, the most interested party, as we've heard, is wanting to move forward as quickly as possible. So I, I like the idea of being able to have both options still at the end of the day, but it is a significantly longer process, should we choose to say no RFP. So I guess what I'm getting to is I'd, I'd really love to have every... So, I guess what I'm getting to is I'd, I'd really love to have everyone's input as to whether you're comfortable with the RFP process. Because if, if there's as much reservation as, as I have from everybody else, then it would be much more advantageous to the, again, the interested party that, that we've heard from to not waste the time of going the RFP route, if, if at the end of the day, we're all like, no, this won't work anyway.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
I'm definitely supportive of the RFP process. I think even at the end, like we did the last time we did the RFP, we did not end up with, uh, uh, anyone selected, because we had no one put in for the RFP. But we ended up with a whole lot of knowledge about what may or may not work downtown, and, um, opinions from developers all over. So, I think that we definitely need to proceed with the RFP process. And then, there's other options if either nothing happens, or we don't like what happens. But I think we definitely need to go along that route first and see where that takes us. Because that's, we may be leaving options out there that could, you know, totally transform our downtown if we don't go through this process first.
I agree.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Amen, sister.
That's quotable. So, direction to, um, legal to move forward and, and, um, bringing back a proposed, uh, RFP with language and, um, for council to, to weigh in and work with the MDC council, um, Mr. Lakey as well.
Madam Members of the council, I, I guess what I would like to do is work with Madam Mayor, maybe Councilman Cavanagh, and if, if another council member wants to participate in developing who specifically you would like to see on the committee. Um, and then, we could bring that back to you in a couple of weeks. And then, if that is acceptable, then, I mean, at the same time, Mr. Lakey and, and, and Mr. Villegas from their office is going to be working on some draft language. But, Mr. Watts's advice was you really would like the committee to own that, to make feel that they had some ownership in the criteria. So, if we can establish the committee, and then we work through the criteria, I think the language will really be the easy part of the RFP. I think it's the criteria that we think are the most critical, um, needs or wants for this RFP. And so, if, if the council's okay, I'd like to come back in two weeks with some recommendations for the committee members, so that we can keep, keep this on track.
Okay, um, I, I think we probably could come back next week.
Okay, yeah, next week's fine.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cavan.
I think to that point for, for all of council, if you've got either suggested names or suggested agencies that we would maybe want to consider for representation on this committee, to either send those to either myself, or the mayor, Bill, or all of us, just so we can make sure that they are at least considered for what we would bring back to council to ultimately approve.
Very good. Okay, item D is the Bower Street, um, Facility Discussion. This was requested to, to put on. Uh, again, we're looking at city-owned properties and, um, whether they're in use or not, and if they, as Mr. Neri said, they need to be determined that there is no use. Since we've started that discussion, we pulled some information together, but, um, there's been a recent, uh, discussion in city employee parking and fleet vehicles. And, um, so, at this point, I'd like to spend a little bit more time further vetting, if there is a need for this property or not, um, in light of, of some of the additional parking demands that we're starting to feel, um, in our, our city employee parking lots. And, and then, we can bring this further back if, if that works with council. I didn't want to not have this discussion. We, we want to make sure that we can bring relevant information.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Is the building itself being used for anything? Is it storage?
Uh, we were using it for some police, um, storage. And, but, the parking area itself, um, is available for, for additional parking needs.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
That sounds great. If we have a, a use for it, I'd love to use it. I just think it's a nice saw, and don't like it sitting there. I'd rather private sector own it if we're just kind of casually using it, because there's some space there. So, I, I'd love if we had a date that it was on a future agenda.
Okay.
That's up to you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
About a month. Like, like the month of April. I'll give you a month versus a date.
Um, I, I'd like to...
I just don't know what date it would work.
I, I think that we could probably have it on our workshop on April tenth. Yes, I'm gone the two, Tuesdays after that. If, if we can't, I'll, I'll at least, um, bring an update back if I don't have all the information, but I should.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cavan.
Just for clarification, because I don't want us to set unfair expectations to you and staff, is the conversation on the tenth going to be more about parking, City Hall parking as a whole? And then, at a later point in time, we'll talk about the Bower Street building? Or is it your plan to talk about them both together?
I don't know. For sure, we'll be prepared, what we, I, I think what we need to do is, is give, um, some solid numbers about parking spaces, number of employees, number of fleet, and see what all we can park at the Bower Street property. And that will determine whether we design something for the long term. If we design something for the long term and council supports that, I think the building probably goes away. But, we want to make sure that the police has, um, other plans for the use that they have. And, and so, I, I can bring that back. I'm, I believe I can have all the information by the tenth. And if I can't, I'll update you, and then we'll do it in May. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, it, it, it does.
Okay.
And I, I guess just one person's perspective is, I'd like us to take a look at parking as a whole versus how much parking we can fit at the Bower Street building. I think those are two separate conversations, and both what our parking, um, availability is today versus where we project that will go. And so, that, that's where my question was, is this a conversation about parking, or a conversation about parking at Bower?
I, I, I think when we have the conversation, um, we need to look long-term. Anything further?
Madam Mayor, nothing more than...
Mr. Borton.
Then, there was a very well-versed memo on this topic. It was brief, it was on point.
It was very, it was very wonderful.
I just was hoping somebody would cite it, that's all. Thought it was really good, but we can move on.
Do, do you want me to read it into the record?
Oh, it's too late now. It's awkward.
Okay, if there is nothing further, um, council item ten E is Resolution eighteen dash two zero six seven. Uh, you have both, both the clean version in the resolution, as well as the red line. So, you could see, um, the changes as proposed.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
If there's no discussion, I would move that we approve Resolution Number eighteen dash two zero six seven.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll on approving Resolution eighteen dash two zero six seven?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All eyes must be carried. Item eleven A is Ordinance eighteen dash one seven six seven. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title only?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian Ordinance Number eighteen dash one seven six seven, and Ordinance File H twenty seventeen zero one five seven Kobe cope. For the rezone of a parcel of land, being a portion of the west half of the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section Eight, Township Three North, Range One East, Boise, Meridian, City of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification from CG, General Retail and Service Commercial, zoning district to IL, Light Industrial, zoning district in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Hey, you've heard the reading of this ordinance. I don't see anyone who would like to hear it read. Do I have a motion from council?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance Number eighteen dash one seven six seven, for suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item eleven A. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All eyes must be carried. Item twelve, under future meeting topics, um, I, anything under this item? I do have a couple of events. We have, um, Easter egg hunts on Saturday. One of the biggest ones is at Kleiner Park from ten to three. And, um, that's by Capital Church, and Meridian Optimist has their annual, uh, Easter egg hunt at Meridian Elementary at, that begins at eleven, and it lasts fifteen minutes. If you've ever been to it, you know why it goes so fast. Five Mile Creek H two segment, the ribbon cutting is Wednesday, April fourth. At four o'clock, bring your bikes if you want to, to experience the ride. And do the right is Thursday, April fifth, all day long. All day, you have to be kind. The person to your right.
Aw.
Okay, I can do it.
ABC sitcom, too.
And, you know, if you really want to, you can turn around and do it on your other right, too.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, if you don't want to do the right, do the left. Do, just be kind. Mr. Borton.
Just, uh, as future meeting topics, a heads up on the, the agenda for the next couple of weeks. Next, uh, Tuesday is Costco Tuesday.
Costco Tuesday.
And then, the workshop is getting chock-full of stuff. So, as a heads up, the workshop, we're going to have an MDC annual report, the New Ventures Lab quarterly report, our Finance Department annual report, IT annual report, Clerk's Office annual report, Part Two, Continued. And added to that will be the Bower Street discussion and findings and linebacker follow-up. So, busy workshop in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to add to it next week?
Okay, item thirteen is Executive Session. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
That we go into Executive Session pursuant to Idaho State Code seventy-four two oh six one A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into Executive Session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All eyes.